Okay, it looks like we have everybody here, so why don't we go ahead and get started? Let's call the Johnston City Council meeting number 22-15 to order. The work session to order. Cindy Roehl, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Martin? Ready? Rhonda's changing rooms, she'll be momentarily here.
Did you get some indication from them?
Councilmember Martin, are you present?
Here.
And, oh, Ray is not with us yet.
He thought he may be late.
Okay, fine, fine, okay. Let's move on to the discussion items then. Item 3A, Discussion of the Johnston Gateway Update. It is. I'm just not maybe speaking into it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You get the honor of having myself, Matt, and Adam for this item. So you get all three of us. This is just a quick update on some of the projects that are occurring right now in conjunction with both the Ignite site as well as the Gateway project. Last Monday, I believe it was, Fire Department sent up their drone and had a chance to get some aerials of some of these sites. So that is what you are seeing. The first one that I'll talk a little bit about is the detention. This is a detention that was bid out last fall and constructed this summer in regards to the, eventually the Ignite site, we lost our picture, as well as the Flume. Currently, this detention, approximately 75% of the detention is going to be associated with the Flume and another 25 with the Ignite. Currently, obviously, we don't have really much coming off the Ignite site. So what you see here is the result of both general groundwater as well as the Flume. This project, the detention area was completed about three or four weeks ago. As you can tell, it's not at complete full pool, but a couple of things to point out. I probably should have my mic. Here is that point two right here. There's a large culvert that is basically the overflow for the detention, and it flows underneath the trail and out to Beaver Creek. It has been filled up in the last three weeks enough that we do have a slow trickle of water that's going through there. So the nice thing that it's doing right now currently is it's taking all the Flume water, all the impurities that are coming down the Flume, and catching that and letting it settle to the bottom. So this is our first opportunity for that. Something that's just off the screen there is we also have a trail realignment. You can kind of see where the trail was taken out for the detention. We've rerouted the trail around the backside of this. That realignment has been complete and will continue after this fall. There is some armoring of the shoreline as well as some other projects down south of this that doesn't allow us really to take care of that trail at this point, but next year we will have a full realignment of the trail. So with that, I think it's going to shift, and I think Matt's up next.
Oh, wait.
John, go ahead.
I tried to get out of there without questions.
Not so fast. So remind me, John, does this detention pond, does it have any recreational uses?
Currently, we're just getting it set. There's going to be a lot of landscaping around it. Certainly, with high water, we're going to have fish that will come back up into it from Beaver Creek. There'll be, once the water is flowing, it basically will be another creek. So fish will swim up the creek into this detention pond. So that's going to be a potential for fishing. Until we actually get into it, we don't have any specific plans of recreation. Certainly, we're not going to encourage any bait to be in the water or anything like that, but...
But there might be some opportunity to us.
Maybe a walking trail or something like that.
Stock some fish in it for a small pond?
Stocking fish is a little bit iffy just because it's going to flush quite often. So you'd be flushing fish down into Beaver Creek constantly, and of course, anytime it's high enough, you're going to have the carp and things like that.
Could it be like the pond there on Pioneer Parkway that people fish in?
Oh, yeah. They'll probably be...
There'll be enough fish fed into it that they...
Yeah, there'll definitely be kids in that that will end up starting to fish us. Any other questions?
So the Flume you talk about, so it would be helpful to have sort of an idea of what area, what part of the community is where the stormwater is draining from into this.
Sure.
I know we've talked about that this detention pond serves that purpose, but I've never really seen a map that shows.
Sure, we can get that map and send it out to you.
You know, remember when we had, obviously, this area of the community above it was hit really hard when we had that 10-inch rain, and we had a lot of issues with that. This obviously is below that. So, but obviously, the significant benefit is water quality improvement. It seems like a little flow into Beaver Creek, but also quantity of water that it will flow from this Flume into Beaver Creek. Is that fair to say?
That is. Basically, and like I said, we can get a map. Basically, anything from Wallace to the Hy-Vee parking lot and towards Terra, all that flows this direction.
So pretty much all of the Green Meadows neighborhood.
Pretty much all Green Meadows flows into the Flume. Yep.
How deep is that?
In the middle, it's probably 15 feet deep.
And is there, I don't know enough about detention basins. Is there an expected life expectancy of those or before, does this one specifically have an estimate before we'd have to dredge it or somehow?
Yeah, I would have to check with the engineer on specifics of that. Certainly, these types of detentions do have a time period that you'll have to, at least where the outlet is, you'll have to dredge some of that.
Thank you.
And even though this is a stormwater project, are we using stormwater utility funds for this or not?
No, this was, basically, we borrowed. Initially, I think we used wastewater money initially, and that was paid back this current year for this project.
Good evening. Give a little bit of an update on our road project there at the intersection of Merle Hay and Johnston Drive. This morning, we actually closed the west leg of the intersection. So how you would get into Sonic, Bandit Burrito, Jimmy John's, that was closed at around 6:30 this morning, and we actually opened the Loop Road, the access, that is now the new access to the businesses. Last week, we did mill the surface of the west half of the project off to see if there was any patching underneath of that surface that we had to do. We were happy to report that there was very minimal patching that had to be done to prepare that so that we can put the surface back on. Currently, the storm sewer is 80% complete. We just have a little bit of storm sewer that will end up coming on the east leg down towards the bike trail, so between the Merle Hay Road and the bike trail, the inner urban bike trail, we've got some storm sewer to install there just yet. So the contractors over there are currently working on that. Our sanitary sewer is 100% complete, and this was mainly done around the Loop Road to serve future developments, and that's all been complete. Water main is about 60 to 75% complete. We are having to do some stubs on the east leg there into live serve. The water main ends up being underneath the roadway, so we wanted to get that out from underneath the roadway to serve those properties so that we don't have to tear up the new road in the future. Grading is 75% complete. You can see they've applied the black dirt around the Loop Road, and we've got that ready for seeding yet this fall. The next thing that we'll have is the overlay, and the overlay actually is scheduled for the 10th, which I believe is Saturday night. And then they plan on opening, doing a traffic switch and opening that segment on the 11th. Once we get striping and everything, and so it'll be scheduled later, we'll have more details to come out as that schedule kind of firms up. But currently, that is the contractor's schedule right now to get the west half of Merle Hay overlaid, drive to get it open, and then we can switch over to the east half and get that completed before snow flies. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Just still looking at roughly December...
The asphalt plant generally closes at Thanksgiving, so I'm hoping that we're done with the road portion. We will have to come back in next spring and probably button up the trail along the east side of the road, along the north side of Johnston Drive, and do some restoration and final seeding.
But at least the traffic.
Yeah, the goal is to have the road open. So they're going to start on that widening on the 12th, Monday of the 12th, they'll start on the widening on that east half, and the goal is for them to get that widening completed, and then we'll make a judgment call at that point in time depending on where we're at in the season. If we're not going to be able to mill that surface off and get the asphalt on, we will have to come back and do that in the spring. But the goal right now is to get the road work completed.
Okay, cool.
There actually, one other thing is the additional through and turn lane on that east leg on Johnston Drive is scheduled to be poured late next week or early the following week. So making progress.
Any questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
So a little bit more of the lay of the land here, what we're looking at. On the bottom left of that, you see the old concrete, some of that's from the old storage facility there, some of that's from the Sears building further south of Merle Hay Road. Speaking of Ignite, their plan is to start grinding that and using that as part of their field grade within the next two weeks. So they've been working towards that for a while, and hopefully, that'll be the start of some more activity onto this site here in about one to two weeks, starting with milling of that concrete and then the underground trenching about that same time. So if you look at kind of the top-left-ish part of where the griddings occurred, that's where the building pad is. That's about 98% done at grade. It's wintered, so it should be about ready to build on. We're expecting to see building plans. Pile of dirt on the bottom right, that's primarily the dirt from the detention ponds, so that is the city's dirt. The goal is to shift that further to the right onto the City Park property. We're working, trying to coordinate with Chris Christensen how those grading transitions happen between his property and the City Park property, so we're waiting for him to firm up his plans. Skipping down two photos if you would.
Adam, before you move, so the kind of the dirt pile there that's from the detention pond, and then you see kind of the grass that's to the south of that. Is that part of the project? Will there be fields there?
Those are the city fields, so that's where that full-size soccer field on the City Park would be, and then the cricket field, kind of right where the mouse is, right there, stretching up a little bit more to the east.
It might be, I don't know if it's possible or not, but it would be cool if you could take a photo like this and kind of overlay the site plan, so you could kind of, you can kind of visualize it a little bit, but I don't know if that's something that could be done and just emailed out.
If somebody more technologically savvy than myself is able to do that.
Just to get a vision of it, it would be helpful. I mean, I had a chance to walk down there. It's pretty cool, the trails, and you can, frankly, you can, right now, if you're on the trail, you can walk up in amongst those dirt piles, the dirt pile and the concrete pile, now, just on a nice evening or whatever, so.
Yeah, so give you a non-technical version, I guess. The gymnasium would be right in this area, that's the old prison sites, and that's where that brewery would be, and the field house extending in this general area. When you get into the Ignite fields, they're kind of free baseball fields, church lit, soccer field here, and then you get in behind the polyeyes property, that's where you have that transition kind of between the City Park property and Ignite fields, their parking lot, volleyball courts, a little concierge stand right in here. Transition between Christensen property and the city's park property. So you've got a city full-size soccer field here, cricket field down into this area, smaller soccer field right along the trail here. Do you want to look at that more or less at Earth?
Yeah, the playground's up on the left corner where it's green right there, too.
That was helpful, but if we could do the overlay, that'd be sweet.
Dump down a couple photos for me. So I'm zooming in on this one at the Bombers site. Much like with Ignite, you know, I think there's been some challenges and things have just moved a little bit slower than everybody was hoping. With Bombers, there's the initial announcement of Sweet Shots and then Bombers, and then some negotiations between Topgolf and Bombers, and eventually wound up with an intent by Topgolf to build elsewhere in West Des Moines. So that slowed the group down somewhat, but we did, the Economic Development Committee met with Alan Stoy of Bombers this morning, and that group is working on consolidating and working towards a revised plan that they'll be bringing forward to us. So they're still very excited about the property and making Bombers happen, maybe with some tweaks to account for kind of the environment that's out there right now, but I think we're still working with a good team there, and I think in the next couple of months, we'll have a clear picture of what exactly this project will look like as well. We also touched on at the Economic Development Committee meeting this morning, the half-acre. That's just to the east of the Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh there.
There's a full acre area that Cindy's highlighting. They've agreed to sell the half acre on the east, so from here to the city property or the former city property east.
All, about three months ago, we discussed that, acquiring that property. We kind of put that on the back burner for a while and discussed it again this morning at the committee meeting. They have accepted our purchase offer price, which is a hundred square foot, just over $50,000, I believe. So we're going to move forward with finalizing that purchase agreement, bringing that back in front of City Council, so that we've got that property in our possession as we work towards the kayak launch. And John, maybe you want to pop back up and talk a little bit about where we're at in that process and the...
Yes, we're still, with the kayak launch, we're still in the kind of investigations stage of trying to figure out what the development will be. We have made contact with the Maggie, I can't think of her last name.
McLoughlin.
Yes, McLoughlin. Mid-American has a water trails grant that is available this fall as well as spring. So I reached out to her and kind of let her know what our situation was, what the timing of everything. She did get back to me and indicated that the fall, that she's hearing there's going to be actually quite a few requests, and she thinks with our situation, we're better off waiting until the spring process begins again, that the funds will be there, that with some development that still needs to occur and with final design concepts that need to be brought forward, she thought it would probably be best to wait. We'll keep in contact with her. That grant doesn't open up until September 15th, and it closes in mid-October. So if we're in a different situation here in the next week or two, we'll certainly look at that, but we want to take all pieces into account as we move forward. We will look at a DNR water trails grant that is due in October. That one we will move forward with because there is no spring part of that grant, and she did indicate in my email and her email response back to me that we can match the DNR grant with the Mid-American grant, so we can kind of pair those two together as we move forward. So there's some components that we can look at. She did indicate that although it doesn't score real well, that you can purchase land. So there is capability that as conversations occur, if we are looking at that half acre, we could potentially use this grant to purchase land towards the launch of a kayak site. So there's a few things still yet to discuss and options there, but things are starting to move forward a little bit. So it's exciting to move forward and possibly get our third launch site here going in the next six to 12 months, so. Any questions with the launch?
And Maggie is with I- Iowa Con, which is the...
I- con or whatever, okay.
Yep, yep. All right, the final picture here is the now soon-to-be infamous Trestle to Trestle Bridge. We're nearing completion of this project. As you can tell by this aerial, I think early last week, they were able to knock the coffer dam down. They used that rock plus a little bit more to kind of armor the shoreline right around that area, and it's getting close, real close. Grand opening for this, I think everybody has that information, but it's September 15th, which is what, a week from Thursday, I believe?
Correct.
So this is being put on by Polk County Conservation, and I think everybody's real excited about where we're at with the process, and I haven't seen it at night, so I'm not sure if the lights are on yet, but it looks great.
Before you move. John, that picture of it looks very white. Is it white?
I think it just is reflecting more. It does not look like that from down below.
Well, that's what I thought. That wasn't what I expected, so.
Yeah.
And that's not what I see when I drive down the intersection.
No, when you drive by, and I've gone out to the site, that's not anything what it looks like from the side or directly above. I guess I have never flown 100 feet above it, so maybe it does look like that. But no, it's, I think it looks great. I think it's going to be really a showcase coming into Johnston from the Des Moines area.
John?
Yes, forgot you were online.
Is the lights working on the bridge?
I have not seen the lights yet. I'm going to ask that question before the grand opening.
John, I did talk with the inspector today from Polk County, and the lights are not operational at this point in time. There's a few minor things that need to happen. They won't affect the grand opening next Thursday, which is at 2:00, but they will still work on some components of the bridge that, again, it's safe, it'll be safe for passage, but I think there's some expansion joints there's need to work on in the electrical parts.
There's some bolts, they're changing out bolts.
They're still waiting for four parts to come in that's a part of the electrical part of it, so. So I mean, it will be operational, but they'll still be working there for a while. And as John mentioned, I mean, they still have all the cleanup and grass and those kinds of things they have to do, but, so there will still be some work even after next Thursday.
Will there be any landscaping?
I'll have to check with Polk County. I'm not familiar with what was brought forward as far as any kind of landscaping in that area. I know they're cleaning up the entire site and replanting at least the grasses and that, but I'll check on that, Rhonda.
Thank you.
I thought the riprap was the landscaping, but maybe not.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, I know, it was a small, poor joke.
Any other questions?
And a bit outside the gateway, but Janet got some nice pictures of the town center with two commercial buildings nearing completion, so I thought we'd throw that on there as well. You can see the North Shade Sale there. The south one's been down since pretty much, it went up in the spring when we had that windstorm. The manufacturer did send us a new one. We received it last week. We're late enough into the season, we're not going to put it up because it'll be coming right back down after Labor Day, but we will have that one ready to go next year. And we've been talking with the partner that we have in the installation, and I think when we eventually replace these, we'll probably go with triangle ones as opposed to the rectangular ones, they're carrying less of a load, they can handle the hail a little bit better. So now these are very large shade sales, and unfortunately, when you get hail, when you get those high winds, it tends to catch and take a little bit of beating, but fortunately, the system is set up that you can do the triangle ones as well. Commercial buildings are coming along nicely. Number of staff had an opportunity to take a tour of Back Pocket a couple of weeks ago. The concrete had just been poured inside. It looks wonderful in there already. That wooden ceiling looks great, a lot like the overhang on the City Hall. They are anticipating, or they're hoping to be open early December, and you can see on the roof line here, they're missing their HVACs. I think that's going to be the last piece to come together for them. That's probably causing the delay for them. They're hoping to be open in November, but they're hoping to be open for at least part of the skating season out there. They won't have their fire pits running this year, those will go in next year, but on the east patio, they have, I think it's two or three fire pits, gas-powered ones out there as well, so they'll become a nice place for parents to sit outside and be a little bit warmer and watch the kids ice skate. So really great space. The wine bar, back slash coffee shop are also starting to come together. I think the concrete's getting poured on both of those soon as well. So you can see the trellis, that's still a work in progress. They have the metal poles that are straight vertical up in there, those will get painted black, and then there's also wooden ones that come in off of an angle of each of those as well that are yet to be installed along with the pavers, so coming together, starting to look real nice out there.
So Adam, you said Back Pocket, the opening date now is December?
That's what they're shooting for if they get all the pieces of equipment that they're expecting, when they're expecting to get them.
Other questions for Adam?
Do we have opening dates on those other tenants that you referenced?
Based off of where they're at today, my guess is it will be after Back Pocket, but I have not heard a firm date from it.
Okay.
Adam, can you point out which one is the wine/coffee location?
Yes, I believe the wine one is in the furthest north of the Merle Hay Road building, and then just south of that is the coffee shop slash RE/MAX, and then the rest of that Merle Hay Road building is Back Pocket.
So...
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So what is in the other building that's along 62nd?
One-story portion of that building is being built out to be a full-service restaurant with potentially that whole rooftop area being part of that restaurant. Alternatively, there could be a secondary restaurant or bar just in that upstairs space and incorporating a portion of the enclosed second floor. Last I talked to Hanson, they had some good leads, but nothing signed yet. That was about a week and a half ago, so to be determined who that restaurant is. And then there's a, I believe it's Physical Therapists in part of the other building off of 62nd, Athletica, and I believe they have one other named tenant, but I forget who that is at the moment, and then maybe one empty bay or whatnot on the second floor yet.
Fabulous, thank you.
And you mentioned fire pits related kind of to Back Pocket. Where will those be roughly?
So yeah, there's a lot of patio space here on Back Pocket. They have a rentable area that I think could take about 100 people or so for private parties. That has a patio space coming out of portions of Merle Hay Road. Additional patio space south of that, in case the arcade would be in this quadrant. In case it's the arcade, there's outdoor patio space, which is the area to the east of Back Pocket that there's two or three fire pits as well as a connect toss.
What is their capacity?
It's big. When you walk in there, it's, it can handle a crowd.
Were you going to talk about any other development?
Oh, yes. Thanks for the prompt. On the agenda tonight, the consent agenda will be setting a public hearing to consider the development agreement for the Grand State Hotel, which would be just on the south side of the city hall. We'll also be setting a public hearing for the disposition of, of city property, for the sale of that to whoever the selected bidder is on that. So we've been working with Grand State for a number of months, taking a lot of feedback, I think, from the committee and from staff on the design of their building. It's really coming together, I think, quite well and incorporating a lot of the materials and the colors elsewhere in the town center. That too has some patio space that stretches out into the yard as well as that indoor pool, a little bit of conference space. So we'll have those final plans for you to take a look at, I think, at least by beginning of next month, if not before. But they're excited, they're ready to move forward, pretty much have all their site plans together. We've reconfigured that lot just a little bit, so it's pushed a little bit more to the east of that hotel lot. It's a little bit smaller than it was originally anticipated. That leaves a little bit of space for activities or future development, kind of between the concession stand stores building there. All undeveloped space that will stay right here for the time being as we figure out how the rest of the town center comes together. Should be a, a pretty good configuration and pretty closely in line with what was originally envisioned. Any other questions?
Thank you, Adam. That take care of 3A? Okay, let's move on to 3B then, an update on the American Rescue Plan Act and Crown Point improvements.
Mayor and council, happy early birthday. Is it today or tomorrow? And you too. Thank you. I, tonight on the work session, what I wanted to talk to the council, mayor and council about has to do with the funds we receive for the American Rescue Plan Act, which we have called ARPA for the past several months. And we were a, we received our second tranche last week, or the week before that, for a total of $3,365,252.34. I provided a detailed memo to you about what we committed those funds for already and what we have been discussing on a staff level, as well as discussing with the City Council Finance, HR Subcommittee. And what I wanted to talk about tonight has to do with the project that we have on our capital improvement plan that is scheduled for 2024, 25. And that project is the complete renovation of our Crown Point Community Center. And as a refresher for the council and the public, back in 2014, the city did have a steering committee, which came up with an original design concept for this renovation. I've sent out those plans to you. We have those available for anyone who would like to see them. They're on this, in this document as well, which is accessible to the public if someone would like to see what those are. But made up of representatives on that committee were representatives of the council, the Park Board, Polk County Conservation, and then we have senior representation on that board as well. And as we discussed this amongst the committee, John Schmitz, our parks director, has suggested that we maybe want to revisit that committee, committee concept anyway, to make sure that the design we had back then is still what we would like, believes there's some general tweaking that might be needed. One of the concepts would be the pickleball, pickleball courts down where the tennis courts are as well. But part of what originally drove this discussion goes clear back to the final rules being written for the ARPA funds and how a city could spend those funds. And I can't even tell you the number of webinars and training sessions that I participated in regarding the legal use of those funds and how we would report those funds as a community, when we would report them, and so on. And after quite some time and the delay of, of our reporting, the federal government did decide that for communities that received 10 million or less, they were going to change the rules and they were going to allow a city, if they so wished to, they could spend that 10 million for the amount they received, in our case, the 3.3 million, on any general purpose that we had for our community as, as, as we would have spent otherwise. And so that's what we did decide to report. I reported that. We have to report, I had to report by August of, August of last year, I think. Can't remember my dates now, or December, but anyway, whichever. I did report on time when we decided what we were going to do. And I did report some of the things that we were going to do. The biggest commitment we've made of those ARPA funds was a big amount for the sanitary sewer of segment A going out to our annexation area. We did commit about 1.3 million of those ARPA funds. And so in the memo that I sent to you as part of the packet information, I put in, in there this summary about where we spent those funds. And rather than, I guess, debate at length, the police chief and I have talked after I had sent out this memo, there's still, still some discussion. I had put the dollar amount for the new radios, and the new radios being the new public safety radios, I put that in green for you because it ranged anywhere from 750,000, and I put 550,000 because Public Works and Parks have decided to go a different route and not buy the real expensive Raycom radios, but rather do a touch to talk, or is that the correct terminology, push to talk terminology, that will still have interoperability with the police and fire so that we can be connected in case of an emergency, but not the expensive $3,000 radio that they would, they would use. So we're still going to change, possibly have that number change. But basically, we ended up with a possible balance and availability of about 1.4 million dollars of remaining ARPA funds. And in addition to the 1.4 million dollars of ARPA funds, the city has cash of approximately 1.5 of public, public sector tax increment funds we've collected in our TIF 3 area, which was the Terra Park Northwest 62nd Street infrastructure and everything that took place there. So between the two, we would probably have to borrow, I put in there about $740,000. It could be higher, a little bit higher per cost, legal fees and those types of things could be a little less depending on the radios and how we come about. But at this point, the discussion came about with, this is probably the cheapest way, that's not a very nice word for me to use ever, cheapest, but the, we'll pay the least amount of interest ever on renovating Crown Point if we finance the project in this method. That's what I'd like to say. And so the discussion I wanted the council to have tonight is if this plan that staff and the committee came up with, as far as our steering committee and moving forward is a good idea, or if you have another idea. I know John is here. John called me this morning. He's talked to the engineer again about timing and project bidding. He's going to talk about that a little bit. What I sent out to you was their updated preliminary costs of construction. And then I also include a view, their updated preliminary site improvement cost, which was actually like a page number 14 in that whole design concept. It really laid it out as compared to the prices that were out there in 2014. So the details all really kind of there. Now it's a matter of timing and how the council and if the council would like us to move forward with this capital project. So I'll let John talk now.
Well, as far as timing goes, I think we have all the pieces as far as, as cost estimates, especially since the original plan had, had included the parking lot. We took that parking lot out. This also looks at a regrading plan. As Teresa mentioned, the subsurface underneath the tennis courts is really poor. That was going to have to occur here in the next three to five years. Certainly, if we're going to be grading around this building, we thought it would be best just to take all that into account right now, which if we do the grading, we feel like we can add two pickleball courts to the existing two tennis courts, so we can add to the outdoor experience right there. As far as timing goes, we're actually hitting a good time period. Here in a couple of weeks, we will have our first meeting of the steering committee for the senior board. That steering committee, one of the main pieces that we're going to examine if, if the council, so choose to do this, is to revisit those plans as far as the, the review from that perspective. Moving forward from there, we would be able to set up at least one, if not two, public hearings to try to get some general input from the community. This year, being that we're a little bit different than we were in 2014, we would include both Polk County Conservation as well as the DNR, since we have started doing so many DNR programs, to get their input as far as what some of the specific needs would be there. Then try to lay everything out. My concern initially was typically with any type of project, bidding it out, I always liked to bid it out in November or December. We have made contact with the engineer. He strongly feels because this is slightly different than a typical project, that really we probably have until mid-February to be able to get all the documents out and get everything ready for a bid. So what I would like to say to you right now is if we do decide to move forward, we have a couple of options. We would want to try to get everything in and bid this out by February of 2023. If we can't hit that date for one reason or another, because the design, engineering, all that takes a little longer, I would suggest that we hold off until November of 2023. I don't think it's going to impact, this has to be completed by, I believe, the end of December 2025. Okay? So I think the timing goes well there. The difference is if we start putting bids out on the street in March, we usually are going to get much higher costs. So I think it would be much better off waiting until the, the bid climate gets better next fall. But I don't really see any reason why we wouldn't be able to pull everything together by February and get this complete. So any questions with, with any of that? Have you guys reviewed the initial design plans? I know we don't have a lot of time. We only have a couple, 10 minutes or so, and we have one more item here, so.
I, I, you know, I've looked through the, the plans. I think the one thing that I haven't heard in kind of the discussion is the, the public input process. I've heard talk about this committee and I, and I, I don't, I want to make sure that there's some sort of public input process included, and I haven't heard that.
Yeah, definitely. We would have at least one public, fully public meeting.
I guess what I'd kind of like to maybe see is some sort of like a timeline of, okay, you know, we're going to, if you're looking to bid it in February or something, or even next year.
Certainly, we will, we will be able to pull that, that timeline together, depending on what the decision is tonight. We'd be able to pull that timeline together within the next two weeks. Counting backwards is basically what we usually do, is we want to hit the date of February 10th. What's it going to take to hit that date? And what type of public input are we going to have?
And is it, are we envisioning this to be a, like, are we tearing it down to the studs type thing and new windows and all that stuff? Or what, it's hard for me to visualize. And obviously, I see there's an addition, but it's hard to visualize, you know, you know, I hear from different people that like the windows aren't very good at Crown Point or whatever. And to be honest with you, I didn't, I've never, I've only been on the main level. I've never gone, evidently, there's a lower level.
Basically, the shell of the building will stay there. The brick component of the building will, will stay there. Virtually, the entire infrastructure needs to be tackled, which would, would include the windows, the HVAC system, the sewer system in there. All of that needs to be addressed. I think we did a remodel, I believe it's about 2010, 2011 for the facility. The infrastructure was not taken care of at that point and certainly does need to be. In a real easy nutshell, the easiest way I have to describe it is there's a lot of senior programming that's downstairs. Basically, we're pulling the senior programming upstairs and putting more of the fitness type activities downstairs. And then what is currently what I call the fireplace room or the prairie room is going to be the expansion. And out on the, the west side facing the lake will be picture glass windows overlooking the lake. The expansion of the deck will really take advantage of having that picturesque lakefront type area. Down below there will be more of a classroom type space for people that want to play cards, but also it'll be a key thing for our DNR programs, all the different other programs that we're starting to do to give it, its space. Remodeling the bathrooms, making them fully handicap accessible. There's not a lot that we need to do to the kitchen because it's really not a space that's used that much, so we're not going to put a lot of focus in that unless we hear differently. And then looking for storage as well, for tables and chairs and all that.
I think, I think one of the things that we want to make sure that everybody understands is that, you know, as we can, as we propose to make improvements and, and expansion to this building, this is a, this is going to be our community center. This is going to be a place where, where, you know, organizations from across our community can come and, and utilize it for, for, for a variety of different purposes, not just the seniors, but, but, you know, boy scouts and girl scouts and, and Polk County Conservation can come in and do their programming and offer it up to adults and children in the community. Or, you know, this'll, this'll, you know, this'll be the space that we haven't had before to do all of those kinds of activities.
Much more user-friendly than what it currently is.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's where the public input process is important, just because I think, you know, I'm not sure that's how it's perceived today.
I agree.
And it's just not automatically going to be perceived by that. I think we have to think about, how do we promote that and how do we, what do we need to do? And even, obviously, the, you know, the, the schematic designs only show really kind of the physical side of it. They don't show the tennis court changes, and it sounds like you're going to have a bigger footprint for that, but the additional.
Yep. And all, and all that will come. As Cindy's scrolling through here, everything that's in orange is all the expansion. That's the new part. So you can see the new education wing that's in the basement. Up above, you can see how the, could you scroll back? Just one to the top. There you go, keep going, right there. You can see the orange, so the, I'll take this with me. The, the green is the existing fireplace room, community room. This is the expansion. So we're going to end up losing some closet space up here for offices and, and the conference room, so there'll be more storage over here. Once again.
John, on that, it would be the left side of the screen, it would be the direction facing, I guess, west.
Correct.
And that's where all the glass windows will be. So that, that area there will be a real great opportunity for, for rental events with, with a glass facing, facing Terra Lake.
This is all glass.
Yeah, we'll see, you know, graduation parties and weddings and, and other things happening in that space.
And then there'll be a overhang over top of the deck. So once again, this, this is the plan, and there you can get kind of an idea of the overhang. This is a plan for 2014. This did go through, I think, at least one or two public meetings. We had Polk County Conservation, we had a couple of meetings with just the seniors. So we had a lot of input, but that was eight years. So we had a lot of input, but that was eight years ago, so some of the uses may have changed and modified, but certainly we hope to go through that process over the next couple of months and get the input necessary.
So John, do we expect Snyder to continue to be involved with us on this project?
I would think so. I mean, they've done, between them and, who was it? I'm trying to remember the architect.
RDG.
RDG, I think, yeah. They've, they've set the stage for this. They've got all the information still from the first public meetings, and certainly they will help with the moving it forward.
So the question tonight is, is there council support to move forward with what's being proposed here in terms of both the funding as well as the process?
Yeah, so I just want to understand, so as I look at the, kind of the public content part of it, so it shows the 740,000, 739,000 to be paid out of debt service, and I think we currently have probably 3.1 million allocated for this project in the CIP, is that right? So, yeah, so in essence, so what was allocated for 3.1 million, we may now only need 740,000, so that's positive. Okay.
And that's not even considering, and obviously, there's never a guarantee with grants and those types of things, but that's not considering those types of things. And certainly, we'll be making a request to Polk County, and especially since it's a conjugate meal site, and they do so much with the seniors within, within this facility.
And they also received ARPA.
I, I can tell you that ever since 2014, when we had some conversation about this and, and then subsequently put it into the CIP, I've been talking to our community about it, you know, oftentimes when I will speak at different, you know, Rotary or Kiwanis or, or other, other events, I'll, I'll share that this is something that we have planned for the future, and there's a lot of excitement around it. And we hear a lot of positive comments about what we've done with Terra Lake and Terra Park and the Beaver Creek Natural Resource Area generally. And so I throw in the fact that this is, this is something else that's planned, and people just, people, people, people are, are really excited about it and pleased that we have it in our planning.
Teresa, is there an amount by which we have to bond on a project if it goes above a certain amount versus using general obligation or kind of debt service to be able to do so?
Not sure how you're framing that question. Typically, we bond, general allocation bond for anything that's 500,000 or above.
Okay.
Unless for some reason, like a stormwater project or a water project in, in one of our enterprise funds, we have built into the CIP that will be cash as you go, we know that's coming, and so we've done that. But for, typically for our general government projects, we typically bond for anything at least over 500,000, sometimes even if it's over 100,000 and the life is over 15 or 20 years.
Okay. Would you have, there's a requirement that if you, you can only spend 700,000 in one calendar or one fiscal year on a project.
If it's a non-essential project, but not if it's in an urban renewal area.
Okay, that's how you can get around that, okay.
In that case, we would do something that's called a reverse referendum. In this particular case, because this is in an urban renewal area and it's a building, we're going to have to amend that urban renewal area to include a vertical building. We don't have that currently in the plan, but other than that, that's what we would have to do. And then the, the hearing would be a capital loan notes probably for an urban renewal revitalization project, but it would still be paid for by debt service, not by our, our portion, that bottom number.
Okay. One last question, that TIF area, I think you called it Area 3, that doesn't extend further east than, than Crown Point, does it? In other words, does it go all the way to Merle Hay?
Someone's shaking his head no to me.
Okay. Thanks.
Any concerns about moving forward?
Mayor, my, my only concern, if I may speak on it, I, I really appreciate the fact that you have solicited so much input on this, that we can kind of dust off these plans, that there are plans to be able to continue to solicit more input. It, it, it is important. I, I think that the, having a space that's for the community and certainly for some senior programming is important. I, I know that there are going to be folks who are incredibly disappointed that we don't have some sort of discussion or even acknowledge aquatic activities in some form or fashion to it. I don't know space-wise where that would have happened anyway, since it used to have a small pool from a community perspective. But the reality is I think that we, we need to continue to push and challenge ourselves to think about how we can continue to support the aquatic activities and needs within our community. So you'll continue to hear me as a, as a broken record on that. And I guess, Brian, that's why Councilman Burkhart, I've suggested, and I feel it's very important to have a public process as part of this. I, I think that it, I, you know, this plan has been around for eight years. I, I don't even, I've been on the council for longer than that, I don't remember all the discussion and planning process. Mayor, you maybe talk, I don't have a lot of people coming to me talking about this as, and we have a lot of big projects, and so the challenge of us is figuring out how to manage it, and that's a big concern of my part. So I think it's important to have a public process and really use that to say, hey, yeah, we want, you know, we want, you know, we want, we support the city spending 700,000 dollars on this project and, and putting that into, because I, I, I think that's important. And I think that's, that's why I think the public process will be an opportunity for people to say, does this include what, what we want it to include, or do we, what more do we want to see? Because I think that's part of that, so. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to say that I do support the discussions we've been having about moving ahead, getting, getting more public input, working with the architecture firm to update, revise. I agree with you, Mayor, about the need for places for wedding receptions, smaller wedding receptions, or the graduation receptions. I guess my only concern is there's a drop dead date of 2026 that it, the money be spent, so, so having us move ahead now and trying to organize these public meetings, I think, is important. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I really, I really want to see some sort of schedule that says, here's what we're, here's how do we, here's how we'll incorporate that, and here's what we can look forward and build to.
Like I said, we should be able to get that pulled together within the first two weeks here.
Jim, any concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one additional item on our work session agenda, and we are past seven o'clock.
I would advise moving back to staff comments.
Okay, we will do that. So with that, we will adjourn the work session. Do we need to take a break?
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Okay, we will press forward and move into the regular.